I'm gonna ask Lydia to call the meeting to order here in just a moment, but a couple of quick things. I'll go through who we have on the line, and then I'm gonna ask, because we can't see each other, before you speak, just share your name, okay? On the phone, I have recorded Hadley Manning, Edward Zo, Stacy Campbell, Sandra Parker Murray, Jared Make, Tara McInish, Trish Sullivan, Diana Petrick, Judith Marquez, Kevin Duncan, Kathy White, Lydia Wolagorski, John Bartley, non-voting member, and then from the Department of Labor and Employment, I have Joe Barella, Jeff Fitzgerald, Admira Mokas, and Darcy Kennedy. Have I missed anyone? All right, Lydia, if you would, please, take it away.
Hi.
Greg, real quick, I'm sorry, just for the record, Edwin, not Edward.
Oh, I'm s- did I say Edward?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I've written Edwin.
Okay, just for the record.
Apologize, Edwin.
That's good.
Yes, of course.
Okay, hello, everybody, thank you so much for taking the time to join us today. We're gonna call the meeting to order, and I appreciate everyone being here to have this meeting on the phone as such. Last time we met, there were some conversations that didn't still resolve for several people, and so we're going to give ourselves an hour of time to work through some of those things, and I'll turn it over to Greg, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Lydia. So, what I had, during the last meeting, we were talking about whether something was an administrative issue, or a procedural issue, or a significant issue, and I think some of the casual language was partly to blame for confusion. So, I volunteered to take a crack at writing out some definitions of what is procedural, and then rather than use the term important, or critical, or anything like that, with some help from members of the task force, just gonna call it a policy parameter. So let me just quickly work through these. You all should have received an email from me, which is a copy of the one that Lydia sent on the third of the month, I believe, and in that message, we basically said, "Procedural items are those topics that relate to how the task force does their work. It's about the conduct of the meeting, and potentially any discussions between meetings. It includes voting procedures, and the thresholds for those. Approving minutes, opening and closing meetings, tabling motions, things that are related to the conduct of the meeting." And I believe the intent, and again, this is my dislocation, so it only belongs to me at this point, was that a simple majority, seven of thirteen, would be sufficient to pass any related motion to those types of topics, and for the discussion to move on. Then rather than use a term that is nonspecific, we'll call the significant work of the task force, "policy parameters." So any topic related to the outputs the task force creates. Those are products of the task force, and this would be things like proposals or recommendations made to the legislature on the sixteen items, or similar matters that the members feel are helpful in producing, or excuse me, in submitting a product that you can stand behind. So for those, my understanding of the group's intent was, we would strive to get eight of thirteen votes. So if any proposal or recommendation garnered eight of thirteen votes, we'd consider that to be enough mass for discussion to move on. That's not to say that we couldn't, or that we won't have discussion to try to meet more needs, but the idea would be, with all of the sixteen items that we have to address, it'll be important for us to be as efficient as possible, and where we recognize consensus, accept that, document it, and in the event that someone in the remaining group of people still feels strongly about their position, they could document a minority opinion that would be subsequently written up and included in whatever final product the task force produces. So that's my best crack, Lydia and Stacy, at summarizing that. So I'll turn it back over to you to see if you'd like to enrich that, and otherwise, we can just have discussion around it.
For sure, so thank you, Greg, for that, this is Lydia, and referring back to your email, and I think back to the original intent, I just wanna make sure that people, you know, feel heard, and people understand that it would be, we would have the opportunity to clearly document any and all minority opinions for this, in terms of that, you know, we're here to have these conversations, and to document how these conversations went, and figure out which are the most salient points for the recommendations. And so I believe it is our intent to document, you know, any and all minority reports, not just the ones where people feel super strongly about them, but we wanna make sure that everyone's voice is being heard in those processes as fair and transparent as possible.
Hi, Greg, that's, this is Kathy White, and that's just, that clarification is what I was curious about, as well as just, can we, when we say documenting a minority opinion, it really is that we're gonna be documenting the diversity of opinion. So if for some reason, you know, so if for some reason, people feel, I don't know, really strongly about whatever, the family definition, or the length of leave, or the purposes of leave, and we don't have, we don't have eight, but we don't have seven either, we have like five, and five, and three, right? That that would be somehow, that we would be able to document that, to set, to show, to demonstrate at the end of this process, that we have had sort of a robust debate, and that all the diversity of opinions have been heard and recorded, so that other people looking back on this process can say, oh, well, so this was brought up. That was the only thing I was curious about.
Yeah, that is, that is-
Is that your understanding?
Yes, and I think that's a helpful definition. The criticality of the aid is not to say that, you know, everyone bought it, simply to say, do we have enough of an agreement here for the group to move on to the next conversation?
Yes. Okay.
I like it, recording the diversity of opinions. How about others on the line?
This is Jared, oh, sorry, this is Jared Make, I think I was just gonna kind of echo that this is really helpful clarity, 'cause I think part of the challenge that we found ourselves in, in this debate, was that it wasn't clear what that final product would look like, and, you know, I think part of what I was unclear on when we met the last time was this idea that nothing would be recorded unless we reached eight, and I think it is incredibly important, if we do end up, you know, in a five, four, three, you know, configuration, or whatever the breakdown of the thirteen votes, that it doesn't require that we reach eight to document, you know, that this is for a particular issue, where I think this could be the case, that there really is a large diversity in terms of this group, and there may be even more than two viewpoints, and while we haven't reached eight to provide the type of recommendation that, you know, comes with that number of votes, that we are still documenting the breakdown, and I think part of the intent from the legislature that, you know, we are looking at the diversity of our perspective, based on all of the research and evidence, and comments, and other materials that we'll be gathering, and have the ability to voice it, even if there's a breakdown that, you know, we're not able to reach eight. So I think that clarification, and to make sure that we're having a shared understanding of what that final product will look like, and the final recommendation in January is really important, so helpful, and assuming that what I described kind of matches the intent in what we've been discussing, you know, I'm comfortable with that.
This is Edwin Zo. Hello?
Hi, Edwin.
Hi, I just want, yeah, I just want to somewhat echo what Jared has just mentioned. I was, I too was very unclear in terms of that during our last meeting, in terms of the definitions and the goals, and based upon what I'm hearing now, I feel pretty comfortable with the parameters. And I wanna thank you all for making that clear.
Great, thank you, Edwin.
Thank you.
This is Tara McInish.
Yes, Tara.
Hi, Tara.
I was just going to ask if, between now and the main meeting next week, if there can be some information for us on what the final output will look like. What I mean by that is when we talk about documenting the diversity of opinion, is that gonna be from simply someone taking the real time of the discussion? Or is there gonna be some sort of ex-post writing by different groups to submit for report? I just, I think it would just be useful for us to understand what the final output will look like.
Yeah, I can understand that. I can under- So I have a, I have a potential, well, I have a suggestion, I don't know if I'd go so far as to say a recommendation, but I've had the pleasure of facilitating task forces like this in the past, and here's what I'd propose, and Diana Petrick asked the question offline, and so I have had a chance to kind of, and I just wrote this to Diana. So what I envision, and again, it's only my vision at this point, but I'll plant the stake, you want an executive summary with clear recommendations in each of the categories, and that's something like three to five page. Each recommendation is backed up in the body of the report by arguments, risks, priorities, and alternate viewpoints. So in places where certain recommendations hinge on each other, even in the executive summary, you wanna make that quite clear. And then the body of the document would contain, so that'd be the executive summary. The body of the document would contain a few sections. First, the group's mandate and composition. Who were you, how were you chosen, what were you asked to do? The process followed, so the degree to which we can make that graphical, and include numbers like, hey, we had, we received X number of public comments, we had a certain number of meetings, we distilled a certain number of themes, you know, the degree to which we can add that richness is helpful. And then if there are, if there's any narrative on the environment, critical considerations, something like that, that could just be short narrative. And then, policy recommendations. So we were asked to weigh in on sixteen different dimensions. Here are the group's recommendations, and for each of the recommendations, I'd say, there's the headline, this is the recommendation, then there's some discussion or rationale, okay? Then I would propose that we say, a certain number of task force members support this recommendation as written. The other opinions include, and then it would simply say, simply give room for short narratives from others. So in the example that, I think it was Kathy shared earlier, definition of family. In light of a changing so-and-such, the definition of family should be expanded to include X or Y or Z, okay? In the interest of the thing being read, I would encourage us all to be as brief as we can, but there's no fixed length that says that you can't actually develop an argument inside the body of the report. So then I would suggest that there probably are some implementation considerations, or some kind of suggestion or guidance of things that you bump into that you think are gonna be critical items, that wouldn't raise to a recommendation, but you'd think that the policymakers would want to consider. And then there'd be an appendix of relevant materials, and that could be analyses, links to recordings, it could be the reports from CD-PHE and CDLE, it could be, you know, whatever else. So from an outline standpoint, that is what I would suggest, and I think that that meets, or gives opportunity for everybody to be heard, and for us to record that diversity of opinion. So that was a bit of a monologue, but I'll pause right there. Does that seem sensible to you all?
Thank you, Greg, so that was useful. My question, though, was less about the outline, 'cause I was assuming that was sort of how the outline would look, and my question was more about, how is it going to get written? And I would just recommend that maybe the leadership of the committee put some thought into what the writing process is gonna look like. Is there gonna be some individuals that are tasked with writing up most of the body based on the records of the written discussion, or is it gonna be divided up in some way? I just think it may be useful at this point, given the short timeline for the task force, to put some thought under, exactly when we say, we will say this, and we will say this, who will be writing that, and under what process?
Got it.
Tara, Tara, thank you, this is Joe, and I'll ask Jeff to interject. I really think that's part of what we need to have discussions on once we actually get the actuary study back, based on what the task force has identified as possible elements in each of those eighteen levers, or levers, if you will. So I think that's helpful for future work, but I think what we need to do now, coming up in short time, is, you know, what are the options we wanna put in front of the actuary to start giving us some fiscal or financial impact of how we define family, how we structure the program? And so I think we want, you know, I heard Kathy say, a diversity of options. So I think that's the primary discussion, and we need to get to comfortability with all of us on the task force, saying, what do we put in to include, so that we can have the actuary firm do the work we want on some of the parameters we put in for consideration?
This is Stacy Campbell, can I, can I just say, so Tara, I wanna make sure I understand you. Are you talking about, like, physically during the meetings, who's taking the notes, and having the information, and kind of spinning it back to us, saying, hey, this is what we talked about? Is this agreeable? Is that, is that what you're talking about?
Stacy, I was, because there was this discussion of documenting diversity of opinions, I just wanted to understand whether that discussion of documenting diversity of opinions was coming simply through recording the discussion in the meeting, or some sort of ex-post, you know, synthesis? And I was just trying to clarify what we meant by documenting diversity of opinions. I will also say, I actually very much agree with the previous comment, that the greater timely issue, or the most pressing need in terms of time, is coming up with the key recommendations we're gonna give to the actuary. But I was just trying to clarify that, because of the context of the discussion we were in.
So this is Jeff, it's Joe, maybe I could jump in to the comments and the questions that are sort of swirling. We are, CDLE is here to help to craft that narrative on behalf of the task force. What's imperative in that process, in terms of the actual writing, and documenting of minority opinions, and coming up with a more formal final paper, CDLE stands here, ready to help with that process. What's imperative in that, though, is that it's not CDLE's opinions and recommendations that we're capturing, rather, it's the task force's. So we are merely, we can act, and the authors on that, but it really, it literally would be what the task force wants, and so we can assist in that process. There needs to be heavily oversight and editing, and review from the task force members themselves in terms of producing a final product, though.
Agreed.
This is Diana, and it sounds to me like this is kind of two phases. The first phase is delivering a framework to the actuary, and the second phase, I mean, worst case, we have thirteen separate points on each point. And so I, this isn't gonna happen in a public meeting, I see us doing it offline, and perhaps submitting them, and finding common ground, so that we can consolidate some of them? I don't, it just seems very unwieldy, but I don't know what other people's thoughts are there.
This is Kevin, I think a lot of this would come out of the minutes, if we have detailed minutes, if we move through the different levers, you know, we have an idea of what the different views are, and if it's in the minutes, then it should be able readily to reproduce accurately in a written report.
This is Hadley, the way I kind of envisioned this would work, and I admit I've not been on a task force like this before, so I don't know where I'm getting this idea, but I thought maybe at the end of, you know, we've kind of grouped the parameters for discussion, I kind of imagined they'd be similarly grouped in whatever final report we produced, and maybe at the end of every discussion about a parameter, or a set of parameters, we would do- we would do something like what the Supreme Court does. You know, we, we take our votes and then we have a majority and then a minority opinion. And in some cases, there may be a third wing that says, you know, I concur for a different reason or I disagree for a different reason. But that was, I guess, because of the Supreme Court and the way that they do things. That's how I was imagining the, the writing of the report going. And we would sort of assign out each parameter, a group of parameters as we went. And that way, those, whoever felt most passionately about writing whatever section could take the lead and get input from, you know, others who voted similarly. But that was just my thought and of course, just a suggestion.
I think that's a good observation. Other discussion?
This is Jared. I guess, you know, I think that, that could, you know, work as long as we're leaving room, as mentioned earlier, for the possibility that there may not be one majority view and one minority view. But, you know, leave room for something like, you know, a five, five, three. That feels really strongly. And while that may not then rise to the certain, you know, framing of a super majority recommendation, that, you know, I'm optimistic we wouldn't have 13 different views on, on issues. But I do think it's realistic to consider that there, you know, could be three or even potentially four strong views on a couple of the core areas where, you know, the diversity of our views means that we kind of break into smaller numbers than a, a simple, you know, majority, minority view. So, you know, I think leaving some room for that is important. It'll serve the legislature by being able to really see the diversity of opinion that could exist on some of these parameters.
This is Edwin Zo. And I would concur with Hadley in terms of, you know, speaking to, to Tara's point in terms of the mechanism for, for recording these. If, if any, if any individual or any group feels strongly about their opinion that there should be a mechanism within a certain parameter to allow that descending, descending, descending opinion to, to, to be documented in the final report.
I also, this is Kathy. I also think, is there maybe a way, Lydia and Stacy and Greg, to note like when we have these deliberations? Like to, you know, as Hadley said, like the Supreme Court, they have, you know, they hear a case and then they go back and somebody writes the majority opinion. And then the others get together and they're like, who's going to write our dissenting opinion? And there's a process for them to see where they align and where they disagree. And maybe in part of our process, like in our deliberations and our meetings, can we have that be, you know, noted so that it's captured pretty effectively in minutes? And we can document it pretty easily at the end of the day? Like, I don't know if it's like, you turn on the light and say, deliberation starts now or something, you know? And, but, but some, some ways to, to make sure that, you know, we have a, kind of a deliberative process or a place where we can all like talk and like see where we have agreement and not agreement. And then, but CDLE knows that they, that is a place where they can be documenting the diversity of opinion that kind of flows out of that.
This is Lydia. And I absolutely agree with, with that. And as we talked last time and as obviously as we're doing right now, we know that there's going to have to be work in between meetings. And so I don't know how much agenda time we'll have for that. But certainly I think it can be a part of discussion in terms of who's going to, you know, write this up and, and work with CDLE to make sure that we get this documented correctly. So yes, to, to all of this. Are there any other pieces of discussion around this? Because it feels like maybe we have some agreements on this. And so how, how are we feeling about this? Is there any other dissent to this as a method?
Last call. We're not hearing any. So if you happen to be on mute.
Lydia, this is Stacy Campbell. So I just want to make sure we've teed up because we started out, I think, with a pretty narrow objective, which was talking about what Greg had kind of proposed. And then kind of, I, I think went into more detail about the writing. And so are you asking, are we ready to vote on the, the kind of procedural and, what I'll say substantive piece which we-
Policy parameter.
I guess, policy, sorry. So procedure and policy parameters? Okay.
Oh, so I wasn't quite there yet. I felt like we had come to a consensus around documenting minority opinions. Someone's trying to move us along for that, but take it away. Actually, it sounds like we're okay there.
But, yeah. Sorry, this is Jared. I was, I was going to ask before, you know, if we're kind of closing on the entire email as it laid out, if it's possible to have just a little bit of discussion for clarification purposes on the next step, as Joe flagged, which is coming up sooner than the final product. But what will be given to the actuary? And, you know, specifically wondering in terms of where, and it may be limited to certain key areas, an actuary might be able to look at or range, which seems also really important as we think about how we're going to proceed voting on this. And I know others on the task force have more experience with models. But I've been hearing from, from folks in the legislature and others that that was part of the expectation is that, you know, part of what an actuary could be looking at would have some variety on at least some of the, the core policy principles. So it seems important to me to just have a little bit of clarification since I also have been pretty unclear on what the actuary is, is able to do. So I don't know if that's worth raising now or if that's a separate conversation. But something else that's been on my mind.
Jared, this is Joe, and Jeff can chime in if he wants. But I think that's a very good point, a matter that should be a priority for us all is, for those 18 levers, I think we do have the option to put forward. I hope it's not 13 because I don't think we can get the report back in 30 days if we have 13 options in each of the levers. So we're going to have to get to a place where for each of those 18 elements, the task force has said, here are five things, three things that were priority for you to give us information on and data on cost and feasibility. And maybe here were two or three others that were of minority opinion, but we don't have the time or resources for you to look at all of them. So we're going to have to prioritize, I believe, in each of those 18 things. What are the range of options? If you take weeks, say, weeks of paid protected benefits, is it six, 12, 26? We're going to have to give that and I think get to agreement on what are the top three things we'd like information on in that category. So I think it's important to feel comfortable of the complete views of the task force being able to be put into that proposal that we give to the actuary. So Jeff, did I misspeak in any way?
Uh, no, let me just pick up where you left off, Joe. So I agree, I'd love to be able to provide some more depth on this. I've got some thoughts. But so Lydia, Stacy, do you want me to dive into this now? Or do you want to round out the vote and, and close this, this matter at hand? Or do you want me to dive into this now?
Um, I think it's, it's fine to have this conversation. So it sounds like, I was just trying to move us from the minority opinion prior, previously. So it sounds like we're good there. We've now, now we're talking about the actuarial ranges and how we're going to determine what ranges to give to the actuarial study. And, and that's where we're at now. And Jeff, you're going to talk to us a little bit more about the ranges and the, how the study should be commissioned?
Okay. So happy to do so. So just a little, little context for where we are in this process. We are sort of in the middle stage of, of securing a vendor. So we have gotten, we considered bids and we have made a commitment to work with a specific vendor. And we are in the limbo stage of working out a contract with that vendor. So a vendor has been selected. The solicitation was, I think, and Americans speak to this too, but it was very much on target with what the task force is looking for. And specifically, the vendor did articulate a capacity to do some analysis of, on variations. As I've said to some of you via email, this is not my area of expertise. So the vendor themselves would be far more capable to speak to the level of variations they're able to study or produce. But I generally agree with Joe's synopsis, which is, less is, is better than an infinite number of scenarios, given the timeframe that we're dealing with. So we, we are, we should have the vendor in place and under contract no later than the end of this month. One of the elements of their response was that they're willing to have or capable of having in October, a, a meeting with the task force that, so that you can do some Q and A in advance of producing your final out, excuse me, your, your, your output to them at the end of, at the end of the month. So there will be an opportunity for the task force to dialogue with the vendor to get some specificity about these, about the variables and what, what, what's the level of variances that they can look at and, and sort of lock that down. But, so that is, that is where we stand right now with the vendor. And hopefully that preliminary discussion will help you all in terms of understanding the scope of what they're capable of producing in a month's time. But I, I do circle back to what Joe started with, which is, as many variables that we can have a consensus on or a, a, a vote that does garner eight votes while still documenting the minority. The, the higher number of variables we can get in, 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 in that category, the better in terms of solidifying a baseline for the actuary to do the study.
Thank you so much for that.
This is Edwin Zo speaking. I'm, I'm a little bit, I guess, I'm not sure confused is the right word for it. But my understanding, my understanding of the process, as I read it, was that we're supposed to be coming up with recommendations and then run it through the actuarial study. But however, I would be much more comfortable with what I think we're, we're actually talking about, which is actually having, say, a, a few ranges. And I do agree that we shouldn't have, you know, innumerable number of, of data points there to analyze. So typically, I, I think, given that there's a little bit of, somewhat of a binary dynamic going on, that we, we have to have, at the very least, have two data points to analyze. And from the, at least those two, two data points, have the actuarials come back with the numbers. Then, then we would make the, the recommendation.
Edwin, this is Joe Burrell. I think that's a good point. But in the final report, I, I, I don't think there's a mandate for us to only make one recommendation. Remember that the, the report is going to be considered by the legislature to take the task force findings and come up with legislation. So we can put forward several different options in each of those levers as we want to in the final report. So I don't want you all to limit yourselves because I don't think that's what the legislation is asking you to come up with one finite option. I, I think we can say, in this area, here are the three things, three variations that elevated to the top. And here is the actuary study and maybe here for your consideration. And maybe some narrative from the task force on each of those three. But they may pick one of those three or they may pick something totally different. It's up to them to decide the legislation.
Okay, thank you.
And, and this is Lydia. And so Edwin and Joe and Jeff, thank you so much for those explanations. You know, we had heard through the interim that that was part of the clarity and the clarification that people needed to be able to, be able to decide how they felt about defining these things along with footing structures. So I feel like we've had a chance to talk about that. Any other thoughts or discussion about the study or about how this will be included in the final report from the group?
Uh, this is Diana. I just wanted to make one point. And that is, when I, when I threw out the whole concept of worst case being 13 different, you know, points of view, I, I think what I was trying, yeah, I didn't mean to scare anybody. But what I was trying to get across was that, you know, in the interest of keeping this very concise, because I think several people brought up, we want, brought up that we want it to be read. And so we might all feel like the, the most important point may be different. So I, as I say, I don't imagine us having 13 different ideas of what each of the, you know, each one of the parameters should be. And then my other thought was, do we know so that we can prepare which of the parameters we will be discussing first in, at the September meeting? Or should we be prepared to discuss all of them?
No, Diana, this is Greg. So I've put together an agenda and I'm going to run that by Stacy and Lydia. And in that agenda, we'll clarify the order and kind of the pairs and groupings for discussion. So we'll send that out and at least the meetings next Thursday, we'll have that G and O later than close the business this Thursday, so that you'll have time.
Yes, great. But good question. And thank you so much, Diana. I appreciate that.
This is Kevin. Uh, one way, I, I think useful information that we would get from these scenarios that the actuarial would do is to give us some idea of how sensitive costs would be to changes in the parameters. And we can kind of do that, you know, from one extreme to the next. Maybe a, a short duration of leave time versus a high duration of leave time. Given the population involved, how much would the cost of the program change? Because ultimately, they're going to make the decision. And I think we should, when we think about this, we should think about how we can guide the actuarial so that he can give information to the legislature about how costs vary with the specifics. We might need to identify some key specifics that we think are real cost drivers. We might get that from the expert studies. But I think that's the, the output we need to provide is information for the legislator so they can use. Not so much what our recommendations are, but so we give them data and analysis they can use in making their decision.
So this is Jeff. Just in response to that, I, I think that's, that's a good point in terms of what are the heaviest drivers for, from a cost perspective. And again, I, I, I think that will be something that you all have an opportunity to articulate directly to the vendor early in the month so that that's understood going into the scope of work.
Lydia, do you feel like we are ready for a vote on the definitions as proposed and to close out that way?
Yes, I'm ready to have that vote. If there's anyone else that wants to say anything, do I hear a motion to vote? The motion would be to adopt the policy parameters as explained in the email.
I motion, I motion to adopt. This is Edwin Zo.
Okay. So there's a second. Any discussion?
This is Stacy Campbell. I'll second it.
Okay. Greg, will you please call overall?
Okay. Hadley Manning.
Yes.
Hadley, do you vote for that or against it?
Oh, for.
Thank you. Edwin Zo?
For.
Stacy Campbell?
For.
Sandra Parker Murray?
For.
Jared Make?
For.
Tara McKinnish?
For.
Trish Sullivan?
For.
Diana Petrick?
For.
Judith Marquez?
For. And I also want to add, since I was on mute, just with the understanding that we just discussed about how the actuarial study will have ranges and how- that we just discussed about how the actuarial study will have ranges, and how the final , uh, report is going to document, um, majority and minority and different discussions, so, yes, moving forward with that whole understanding.
Okay. Kevin?
Four.
Kathy?
Four.
Lydia?
Four.
All right. Well, we've got 12 fours. Dana is not available. Um, John is non-voting, so, so Lydia?
Okay, the motion carries.
Yay!
Hey, some consensus! It can't be done!
Oh, very good. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. So, thank you so much, everyone, for being available, um, to this today. I hope we can continue to have these really, um, amazing discussions and, and move forward, so, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we need to officially close the meeting? Meeting is closed.
I think so.
Okay. Great, thank you.